Yeah. We're kind of hiding around the corner.
Introduce yourself here.
Okay, I would sing here.
Okay.
Could blow out the hole. Depending on how loud it is.
Good evening and welcome to the monthly Board of Education meeting for Elizabeth City Pasquattank Public Schools. ECPPS is a progressive public school district committed to reimagining education so that all students are given choices to discover and explore their hopes and dreams. And now to begin the meeting, Board of Education Chairperson Angela Cobb.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 24th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. All I can say is wow. This is a really nice problem to have, to have everyone here tonight. We're so thankful that all of you have come out. We're going to begin our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, if everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our invisible religion and justice for all.
Please remain standing. At this time, we have a very special guest this evening singing the National Anthem, PCHS Senior Jamir Magwell.
Hi, my name is Jamir Magwood and I'm from Pasquattank County High School and I will be singing the National Anthem. Oh say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Jamir. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Ms. Parker, can you start us off this evening with our roll call, please?
Chair Cobb.
Here.
Vice Chair Perezza.
Here.
Dr. Sheila Williams.
Present.
Toni Old.
Here.
Angela Williams. Valerie Boe.
Here.
Sharon Woodin.
Present.
Erin Moore.
Erin Brandon Moore.
Here.
Ruby Nunez and I.
Present.
Thank you so much, Ms. Parker. This evening before we begin, we need on the floor a motion to amend the agenda for March 24th, 2025 to include a presentation from Sandy Kinzel on a grant, which will be item 15B, and to return to closed session at the conclusion of this meeting, which will become item 16. A adjournment would now move to item 17. We need that motion on the floor, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Perezza. Can I get a second?
Second.
The second from Dr. Williams. Do we have any discussion? If not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect the vote is unanimous. At this time now, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? If not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that is a unanimous vote. Now we are going to turn things over to Dr. Parker for our recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and let me just again say good evening to everybody and thank you for coming out here and joining us on this beautiful evening in the city of Elizabeth City. So thank you for being here. We're so excited tonight to have some amazing young people and educators and families here to be with us and to our guests as well. We're going to kick it off with some performances by our Central Elementary School Choir and our River Road Middle School Choir and some musical artists that we have on the direction of Ms. Kristy Williams and Ms. Elizabeth Beal and Ms. Monica Williams, who helped our students prepare. Recently, we were invited to perform, our young people were invited to perform at the Coast Guard Marathon Dinner. We have Coast Guard Commander Heidi Kosky here this evening, who's going to speak to us in a minute. But Commander Kosky invited our young people to perform at the dinner in front of some four-star admirals and some military brass. And what you're going to hear this evening was what they performed at the Coast Guard Marathon Dinner a couple of weeks ago and really just took down the house with some amazing performances. So we wanted to replicate that here for you this evening. Ms. Williams and Ms. Beal, thank you so much for everything you do for our young people. I also want to plug that this month is Arts in the School and Music Appreciation in our schools. And so this is an example of our commitment to expand our music programs in our schools. So Ms. Williams, we're going to turn it over to you and let you take it away. So let's give everybody in the choir a round of applause.
If I could do anything, I'd make the world all peaceful and everything would be all right, all right? And everyone would be so peaceful. If I could do anything, I'd let all people do only happy things that would be kind and good? And everyone would be so peaceful, peaceful, peaceful. If I could write the script, everyone would get along? If I could write the tune, everyone would sing my song? Sing my song? And oh, it would be peaceful. Think of the world without any war? Think of the world at peace? If I could do anything, I'd make the world all peaceful and everything would be all right, all right? And everyone would be so peaceful, 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 peaceful.
Kayla, we'll take a photo of it.
One, two. That's good.
Didn't they just do an amazing job? Yeah, give them another round of applause right there. I tell you, to be able to sing in front of a Coast Guard Admiral, that's a really, really cool thing and they got some talent there. So we wanted this time ask Commander, the Coast Guard Base Elizabeth City, Commander Heidi Kosky to come forward with her team and be able to speak right over here. So Commander, thanks for joining us.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me, Dr. Parker. So I just wanted to, I've had to follow this act before, so it is a tough act to follow. And Dr. Parker was absolutely correct. They absolutely brought the house down at the Toast of the Coast Guard Dinner, which is our sponsor VIP Dinner. So I want to thank you all for allowing them to participate and thank you for bringing them that night because I know the parents had to stay downstairs. So you might not even know who they sang for and they might not even know who they sang for. So I just want to give you a little bit of a taste when he says that, that we had the admirals there. So we had eight of the top senior leaders in the entire Coast Guard at that dinner that they were singing for and they just knocked their socks off. And what can be a very stuffy event with a lot of admirals, I see a couple of military in here who probably know that, turned into just an amazing time with the clapping, which is why we were over there, just sitting there and they really got into it. So we had the leader of the entire Atlantic area who oversees operations from the Rockies all the way to Guam and everything in between. We had the leader who's my boss, who oversees all of the Coast Guard bases, 26 of them, but the best bases here in Elizabeth City. And then I want to also let you know that we had representation from the governor's office, Senator Bud's office, and Senator Tillis's office. So this was an amazing opportunity for them and I'm so glad that they were up there and got to sing with us. And they were just a critical part of Coast Guard Marathon Weekend where we had 2,400 participants come into town, all 50 states represented and 15 nations. So it was a really big deal for not only the Coast Guard, but for the city of Elizabeth City. The theme of Let Your Light Shine, which was just amazing and fit in perfectly, actually led us to our theme for next year, which I'm going to keep a little bit secret because we got to have some fun things to reveal. But I'm really excited to again partner with Dr. Parker for next year and see what we can do to bring the choir back and hopefully also spread more involvement into the Coast Guard Marathon with our students and see if we can get some kind of competition between the schools. So we're really excited. But again, thank you so much for allowing them to participate. It was a great opportunity and I think there were some tears streaming down people's faces, but just a great time, especially with the last song there. But thank you so much.
Good evening, parents. Good evening, teachers. Good evening, administrators. And let's not forget the most important people in the room, good evening to our precious students. That's what I'm talking about. Now, for our banquet a couple of weeks ago, I got called up right after the children sang and the children were standing in front of me. They didn't know what was behind them. And I did that, I think, even louder that night than I did here. And let's just say, I scared the children. And so I'm so glad that the children have been moved away, so I don't do it again. I've been asked to pray, but before I pray, I want to take a minute if I can to encourage you. I want to begin with this statement. Heroic work and service is often unseen, unnoticed, and unrecognized. And even though that may be true, we should still do those acts of service. Now, some of you may, some of you who are perceptive might be able to look at me and you see that I've not entered the military recently. Yeah, matter of fact, it's been 44 years. And the reason I bring that up is I remember when I got out of the Marine Corps Boot Camp.
And so as I come this evening, and I'm living a great age to be in the military, I know what it was like when we weren't as recognized, as seen, and as noticed. And you know what, if I had a magic wand and could change one thing today, you know what I would change? I would change that every time a parent, every time a teacher, every time an administrator would walk into a convenience store to buy a Diet Coke, that the guy behind the counter would look at them, recognize them for what they do, and he would say to them, "Thank you for your service." And that when they would stop on the way home, because they love their spouse and they're afraid of their spouse, and they go through the aisles of food line, and the gentleman or the gentlelady stops them and recognizes what they do and says to them, "Thank you for your service." Or lastly, when they go out to eat, wouldn't it be something, if you're a parent, if you're a teacher, certainly if you're on the school board, right? If you walked, if a young person walked up to you, recognized you in what you did, and they said to you, "Thank you for your service." And so I stand here tonight, I only want to do one thing before I pray. Parents, teachers, administrators, we both serve a mighty cause. And so let me say, on behalf of my boss and myself, thank you for your service. Let's pray. Father, it's been often that I've been surrounded by mighty warriors. And I'm comfortable with that crew. And Father, tonight it's no different. These warriors, though, fight a different battle. It's just as complicated, it's just as difficult. And Father in heaven, it is just as important, because the cause of our children and their education, there's nothing that's more important than that in this day and age. Father, I simply pray this evening for peace and wisdom. As the tests are upcoming, Father, be with the students. Give them peace and then give them wisdom. As the teachers give the test, give them peace and, oh Lord, give them wisdom. And Father, even in this meeting that's going to take place in the next few minutes, give them wisdom and give us peace. We thank you so much, and none of this would be possible. And Father, again, I thank you for the hard work, the dedication, and sometimes the unrecognized service of being a parent, being a teacher, and being an administrator. Father, we thank you for these difference-makers and these warriors today. I pray this in your Son's most holy name and all God's people said, amen.
Commander, we would like, if we could, to take a photo of Commander you and Chaplin
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, Dr. Parker, board members and guests.
with the board really quickly, if you could.
This evening, I'd like to invite two special ladies to join me at the podium.
Let's give our friends at the Coast Guard another round of applause for joining us.
Joining me are Jane Snyder, Executive Director of the Albemarle YMCA, along with Annella Torrey, Executive Family Experience and Senior Membership Director. These ladies have worked tirelessly on a partnership that we are announcing this evening. Beginning in the 2025-2026 school year, all early college students will have access to the YMCA facilities. We are extremely excited about this opportunity and this partnership with the YMCA. It's unique, and it's so beneficial for our students since we are located on College of the Albemarle's campus. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Snyder to say a few words.
Thank you very much. I feel, we feel very, very welcome. And I want to initially say thank you very much to Dr. Parker, Ms. Lee, and the rest of the board for giving us this opportunity to serve our early college students here in the Elizabeth City-Pascuitank County area. We are just so thrilled and excited to offer this opportunity. This is the first time that we've been able to partner with the school system on a magnitude of this level. And I think that as we move forward and we think of communities growing stronger together, creating stronger foundations, and youth development, it's a seamless integration between two amazing organizations. We want youth development to be happy, healthy, and whole. So as we move into the new school year, starting in August and September, we're going to be welcoming all of the early college students from the Elizabeth City-Pascuitank County School System. And not only will it build our foundation in the community, but it will also help with enrollment, because the early college program is amazing, and what you're doing over there is, it's integral to our community. And thank you very much.
Thank you. These ladies have worked so hard to make this a reality for our students, so we are extremely grateful for that. I'm proud to announce that the Elizabeth City-Pascuitank Early College received the Rising Star Award from the College of the Albemarle at the recent College and Career Promise Meeting. This means that our enrollment is increasing. More students are taking college classes and being successful in those classes. I'm grateful for the work that our school counselor, Heather Bryner, and our data manager, Michelle Spence, do on a daily basis to help our students be successful. Thank you for your hard work, ladies, even though they're not joining us tonight. I did want to shout them out. Thank you and have a good evening.
And we're definitely going to ask this senior representative to come forward and share some recognition on our government school, government school. Evening, everyone.
I am pleased to announce this year that ECPPS has three students that have been selected to attend the 2025 Summer Session of North Carolina Governor's School East at Meredith College and North Carolina Governor's School West at Greensboro College. The program is for gifted and talented high school students in the nation. The program was administered by the State Board of Education and North Carolina Department of Public Instruction through the Advanced Learning and Gifted Education Program. Each summer, selected students are invited to Governor's School to help build a learning community during a four-week residential session. Students are encouraged to explore and ask questions with the purpose of learning for its own sake and discovering new possibilities that complement their high school instruction without regular class pressures of test scores or grade point averages. The Governor's School emphasizes collaborative efforts in all disciplines. Students go through a local and state nomination process. After rigorous selection and over 1,850 state-level nominations, NCDPI is excited to invite Broderick Hardy, Leland Johns, and Cindy Zoo to attend the 2025 Session of North Carolina's Governor's School. So if they are here this evening, I'd like for them to come up. So while they're coming up, I'm just going to read a little bit about everybody. So Broderick Hardy is a junior at Elizabeth City-Pascuitank Elementary School, Elizabeth City-Pascuitank Early College, and he's going to be going to, in mathematics. And he's been named at the Dean's List of Albemarle, College of the Albemarle, a member of the National Honor Society, plays soccer for ODU Club, travels and plays in Virginia Beach, and plays with that league for three years, and is an avid musician that has taken guitar lessons for five years, and is a self-taught pianist who has played for four years. Leland Johns, who is also a junior at Pasutank County High School, is going to be going into Social Science at Governor's School West at Greensboro College. He's a devoted volunteer at his church, where he has assisted with his church Harvest Fest, numerous revivals, and children's ministry, which is known as Kidstown, and is a member of the Air Force ROTC for two years. And Cindy Zoo, who is not with us this night as well, was one of my former kindergarten students, but I just had to plug that in there right away, is also a junior at Pasutank County High School, and she'll be going to Governor's School West at Greensboro College and studying natural science. She has received a number of academic awards, like Superintendent's Academic Award, the STEAM Expo Competition Awards, and Math and Science. She too is a member of the Air Force ROTC, the Multicultural Club, and she also plays soccer. So let's give these students a round of applause. Congratulations. So if we have any principals here, I know Ms. Lee is also here this evening. You can come up and take a picture as well.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, Board of Education members, Dr. Parker, community members, and colleagues. My name is Dr. Katina Waples, and tonight I get the honor of recognizing and honoring some of our amazing students and school leaders in our elementary schools throughout our amazing district. First of all, we'll be honoring our Elementary Science Fair winners. When I call your name, please come up. Honorable mentions, Penny Rowe from Central and Tori Key from Central. Second place, we have Jonathan Green from Weeksville. Third place, we have Eden Sutton from Weeksville. And our first place winner was Jackson Williams for his project name, "Does Temperature Effect Bounce?" in the project category of elementary physics and mathematics. The focus of his experiment is based on his scientific inquiry regarding finding out more about the effects that temperature has on the bounce of a ball. Through his research and several trials of his experiment, he was able to explain how temperature plays a role in the bounce of the ball. In summary, Jackson has currently won the following awards for this competition. He won first place at the school level at J.C. Sawyer. He won first place at the district level. He won first place at the Northeast Regional Science Fair in Engineering. And he is due to advance to the state level this weekend. Jackson will be competing in Raleigh, North Carolina. We would also like to ask his teacher, Mrs. Williams, to join him. Last week, Cornell Cooperative Extension hosted a luncheon in which two of our Central Elementary School students were recognized for placing in a regional competition regarding their wetland illustrations. The winners were second place Gabrielle Manigault and first place Casey Farabee. Please come up. We'd like to have Ms. Brothers take a picture with her team. This year, we were able to reinstate our elementary basketball program. We had not had our basketball program, we had not had our basketball program since we left and went home for COVID. So we were super excited when we were able to get it back. Tonight, we'd like to recognize one of the people that were instrumental in making this happen for our district. Dr. Hip Barkliff, would you please come forward? Dr. Hip Barkliff is a community schools administrator and coordinator. Dr. Barkliff is passionate about doing the right thing for our youth and making sure that they understand the core components needed for them to win at life, such as sportsmanship, teamwork, health and fitness, and accountability.
Good evening Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, Board of Education members, Dr. Parker, community members, and colleagues. My name is Dr. Katina Waples, and tonight I get the honor of recognizing and honoring some of our amazing students and school leaders in our elementary schools throughout our amazing district. First of all, we'll be honoring our Elementary Science Fair winners. When I call your name, please come up. Honorable mentions Penny Rowe from Central and Tori Key from Central. Second place, we have Jonathan Green from Weeksville. Third place, we have Eden Sutton from Weeksville. And our first place winner was Jackson Williams for his project name Does Temperature Effect Bounce in the Project category of Elementary Physics and Mathematics. The focus of his experiment is based on his scientific inquiry regarding finding out more about the effects that temperature has on the bounce of a ball. Through his research and several trials of his experiment, he was able to explain how temperature plays a role in the bounce of the ball. In summary, Jackson has currently won the following awards for this competition. He won first place at the school level at J.C. Sawyer, he won first place at the district level, he won first place at the Northeast Regional Science Fair in Engineering, and he is due to advance to the state level this weekend. Jackson will be competing in Raleigh, North Carolina. We would also like to ask his teacher, Mrs. Williams, to join him. Last week, Cornell Cooperative Extension hosted a luncheon in which two of our Central Elementary School students were recognized for placing in a regional competition regarding their wetland illustrations. The winners were second place Gabrielle Manigault and first place Casey Farabee. Please come up. We'd like to have Ms. Brothers take a picture with her team. This year, we were able to reinstate our elementary basketball program. We had not had our basketball program. We had not had our basketball program since we left and went home for COVID. So we were super excited when we were able to get it back. Tonight, we'd like to recognize one of the people that were instrumental in making this happen for our district. Dr. Hip Barclift, would you please come forward? Dr. Hip Barclift is a community schools administrator and coordinator. Dr. Barclift is passionate about doing the right thing for our youth and making sure that they understand the core components needed for them to win at life, such as sportsmanship, teamwork, health and fitness, and accountability. Tonight, we would like to honor Dr. Barclift for being an advocate and a supporter of our basketball program this year. He has worked hard to make sure that all of our basketball players, cheerleaders, parents, and our overall school community have had a wonderful experience. He made sure that our students were able to get their physicals, even getting our local doctors to come out and volunteer their own time. He also took care of all things related to the basketball court, which included identifying our basketball game sites, organizing our schedule, establishing the draft for our rules and protocols, and making sure that we had scorekeepers and officials. There were many games in which he himself served as one of the officials to make sure that our games ran smoothly. For his hard work, we truly want to say thank you, Dr. Hip Barclift. Now, we would like to recognize the winners of our March Madness. First, we'd like to recognize Northside Girls' Basketball Team. They had an overall season of 4-1, and they were led by their coach Vanessa Person. At March Madness, at March Madness, they won in a nail-biting finish of 9 to 8. Coach Person, would you please bring you and your team up? These ladies were amazing on the court. They exhibited wonderful sportsmanship, talent, and teamwork at all games. We want to say thank you to Northside Elementary's Girls' Team for placing first place in March Madness. Next, we would like to recognize the P.W. Moore Boys' Basketball Team. The boys had a completely, totally shut-down undefeated season. And they are led by their wonderful coach, Travion Freshwater. After each one of the games, each one of these boys did a very good job of exhibiting sportsmanship to the other team. They would go up to them and personally tell them, "You did a nice job. Your defense was great. Nice job with your shoot. Nice job at the foul line." And for that, we are proud of this group of boys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Waples, and to everybody that helped with our basketball and to our winners, let's give just another round of applause. We're excited about our basketball league. We've got some exciting things we're working on, and hopefully we'll be able to announce when we can do more with the elementary athletes. So excited about that. I want to ask you to open and come forward right now and introduce Governor Bowling and President Prendergast with exciting expansion of our CTE program. So give a round of applause for this, open and welcome.
Good evening. So Career Technical Education would like to recognize three students from Northeastern High School who are currently participating in the Healthcare Explorer Program with Centerra Albemarle Medical Center. But before we recognize these three wonderful students, I would like to give a short bio and introduce Dr. Bowling. Dr. Bowling, I'm sorry, let me just back up. Dr. Donald B. Bowling is the Vice President and Chief Medical Officer for Centerra Albemarle Medical Center. He is a board-certified physician executive focused on physician alignment, healthcare quality and safety, fostering the development of the next generation of healthcare professionals as well as improving health outcomes for the community. He thrives on the diversity of these roles and enjoys developing innovative solutions for health systems to deliver value-based care that improves the health of patients and the community. Dr. Bowling is an ECPPS CTE Advisory Board Member, Scout Master for BSA Troop 150, Cub Master of Cub Scout PAC 150, and Post Advisor of Healthcare Explorer Post 252, and this is just to name a few. So now I present to you Dr. Bowling, who will speak for a couple of minutes on the Healthcare Explorer Program.
Thank you so much, Ms. Overton. I'm here because Centerra is invested in its local communities, and that means growing the next generation of healthcare professionals. Centerra does this through several programs. We have our internship program that, I think this is the first year we have some Elizabeth City-Past Saint Public School students involved. We have our Junior Volunteer Program and our Healthcare Explorer Program, which I'm here to talk about. Healthcare Explorers is not just sitting around and learning about healthcare. For each career we have, we try to give a hands-on activity. So for example, I think our kickoff meeting, we went to the OR. They got to scrub, like a surgeon scrubs, into the operating room. They got to handle surgical instruments. They got to talk to the anesthesiologist, the CRNA, the scrub tech. There was a general surgeon there. We talked about the training for each of those professions. We talked about the pay scale, and they really got to know those professions. So we might do that one week, and then the next week, we might be with Ms. Perezza over there, learning about the therapies, physical therapy, speech therapy, and occupational therapy and what they do. So it really exposes them to the different healthcare careers, and we actually consider it a success if a kid thinks that they might be in one healthcare career, but get there and they learn that, hey, this is probably not for me. Maybe nursing is not the correct career because they got to deal with blood and other body fluids. Maybe I need to become a physical therapist or, you know, one of the other support healthcare careers. So that's really what we're going for in Healthcare Explorers. I do need to say the program is for 14 up to 21. So you might have somebody that graduates high school and they still haven't decided what the career is for them. We have a place for them in our program.
And now I will call the names of our three wonderful Healthcare Explorers. We have Ms. Gabrielle Rivers. Let's give it up for Ms. Rivers. Ms. Gabrielle Rivers. And then we have Mr. Carson McEwen. Let's give it up for Mr. Carson. And last but not least, we have Ms. Navi May Ross Peel. Let's give it up for Ms. Navi.
Thank you.
I want to say first that was all River Road babies, those last three that did my heart a lot of good. Thank you guys for having us tonight. Good evening, Board Chair Cobb, Vice President Perezza, Dr. Parker, Board members and guests. River Road is honored to showcase our students tonight. I am the proud principal of an amazing group of students, but it takes more than just me for River Road to run smoothly. I also have an amazing staff. Funny story about our chorus that started from a random email William sent to me at the end of September that said, "Hey, Bond, I have some kids that want to sing." And she took them for 40 minutes twice a week during an intervention block, so not even an actual chorus class, and it turned into that. We were truly not prepared for what that chorus has become and what it will be. But on top of that, I've also been equally blessed to have an amazing coaching staff for my student athletes that put the emphasis in student, just like I do, student athletes. And before I call these names or before I call these coaches, I want to make sure you guys understand that these kids have to keep a certain grade point average. They have to pass a certain number of classes for them to be on a field, to throw a ball, to dribble a ball. And I am very much so vocal about the fact that they will not throw a ball or dribble a ball if those grades are not correct. So they have done an amazing job this year. I have three coaches right now. My head coach for my volleyball team is not here or not in North Carolina at all. So I have asked her assistant coach and my other coaches, but my other coaches also coach other sports because they're just that dedicated. So Coach K is my assistant coach for volleyball. If my volleyball team is here, a lot of them do play other sports, so there's practices, but if my volleyball team is here, could you guys come forward? I'm going to send these two young ladies over there to you guys for the picture. My basketball coach, Coach McNeil, she is also the assistant coach for girls' track. So she gave me a nice statement to read for her. So this says, "River Road Middle School Girls' Basketball has had a phenomenal basketball season since 2022. The girls' basketball team has been led by head coach Aleah McNeil and assistant coach Alexis Harris. These young ladies have built a program that shows honesty, work ethic, scholarship, and commitment. It is more than just basketball. It is about making these girls the best versions of theirselves. In 2022, 2023, they were the second-place runner-up in the conference championship. 23, 24, they took first place in conference tournament champions. 2024, 25, they are the Albemarle Coastal Conference regular season champions with an undefeated season." Here are a few of our girls. Can I please get Kalen Banks, Desari Whitby, Tiffany Moore, Brooklyn Whitby, and Vashti Blocker? Kalen Banks, number two point guard, eighth grader, led the team in most assists and steals. She has represented the true definition of a student athlete throughout her middle school career with academic standings of A and AB honors, including the Scholars Award and Defense Player of the Year. Desari Whitby, number 35 shooting guard, eighth grader, go-to shooter, who has worked hard on and off the court, receiving Most Improved and Most Valuable Player awards throughout her middle school career. Tiffany Moore, number 24 center, seventh grader, who is 6'2", dominated as a post player, reaching double-doubles and showing phenomenal skill on the offensive side. She received the Offense Player of the Year Award. Brooklyn Whitby, number 21, small forward, sixth grader, the cleanup man. For much-needed rebounds and defensive stops, she received the Most Improved Player Award. Eighth-grade Vashti Blocker, y'all will recognize her, she was also our saxophone soloist up front. There have been many female athletes who have worked hard and helped make a wonderful program. We appreciate and honor each and every one of them. Could I please get Coach Stallings up to the podium? Coach Stallings is my football coach. He also took on baseball this year, and this is the year that we have had the most baseball players go out for baseball since he came on as coach. So Coach Stallings has a couple of words before he calls the boys up.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It is so an honor and a privilege to be the football coach at River Road Middle School and now the head baseball coach at River Road Middle School. To piggyback off of my amazing principal, she said that they are students first and athletes second, and we make sure at River Road that we maintain that motto at River Road. There are a couple of football players here tonight that we just want to recognize, and we're going to ask them to come at this time. There's a lot of other athletes that participated in football that are doing track and baseball who just got out of practices as well. But those of you, the boys that are here tonight, please come up to the front.
A lot of these guys play two or three sports, so they are very busy and very tired a lot of the time, but they do make the effort to keep those grades up, and we at the school are extremely appreciative. So thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Welcome to River Road Middle School, home of the Rockets. We're doing a lot of stuff around school to kind of energize kids and to make things a little bit different. We are doing something in our math class where they are combining. I have three classes in my cafeteria that are combining for intervention, and all kids learn differently, so we have it set up in stations. But we're doing things all over the building, and everything is with the kids that we have in mind and to try to keep them focused and energized going into the end of the school year.
Today, we are mapping the swamp. Our students are reading a book called The Weirdo by Theodore Taylor. It's about a young girl who lives in the Great Dismal Swamp. So my students are reading a book called The Weirdo by Theodore Taylor. So, my students are digging into the text, finding textual evidence of features, and they are drawing their own visual of what they think the Great Dismal Swamp looks like. Overall, we want our students to dig deeper into the text, especially when it becomes to taking the state test. If we can get them to dig deeper into novels such as The Weirdo, something that they find interesting, when it comes time for a end-of-year test, they'll be able to focus and engage with what they're reading.
So, my name is Morton Collins. I am the lead EC teacher here at River Road Middle School. So, today, we are learning to do some like 3D-style cakes. These are like fun character cakes, but we're doing this so our kids can learn a skill outside of high school, we're learning to be bakers. This is a program I started this year. We're learning life skills such as like cleaning, cooking, self-sufficiency. We're going out in the community every other week, doing community days. So, it's been a lot of fun. I'm trying to have my kids learn some self-sufficiency so that way they can do big things when they get out of my room.
Hello, I'm Tajma Johnson Lassiter, the IB coordinator here at River Road Middle School, and I have some big news to share. River Road is officially a candidate school for the IB Middle Years Program. This means we're on an incredible journey toward becoming an IB world school, joining a global network of institutions dedicated to high-quality, challenging, and internationally-focused education. At River Road, we believe in shaping globally-minded, critical thinkers who are ready to take on the world. Want to learn more about IB and its transformative programs? Feel free to reach out to me, Tajma Lassiter, at River Road, and visit ibo.org for more details. Stay tuned, big things are happening at River Road.
Here at River Road, it is one belief, one focus, and one goal.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, the illustrious board, and Dr. Parker.[732.01][732.01][laughter] So, we want to, you know, recognize our staff at Northeastern High School because, like Dr. Bond, she recognized athletes because they, you know, they are student athletes. But then, there's a group of people, as the Lieutenant Commander referred to, I don't know if he's still here. These are the unseen, unnoticed, and unrecognized heroes. They're the ones who are there day in and day out, like our coaches, who go unrecognized. So, we want to recognize them tonight. First, we have our literacy instruction team, which is consisted of the English teachers, science teachers, and social studies teachers. As I call your name, please come up briefly. Ms. Jennifer Darnell, she was not able to make it. Oh, there she is.[790.01][790.01][applause] Ms. Patricia Griggs.[800.01][800.01][applause] Mr. Brian Peterson.[806.86][806.86][applause] Ms. Melina Bates, she wasn't able to make it. Ms. Dana Bates.[818.11][818.11][applause] Ms. Fatima Faison.[822.51][822.51][applause] Mr. Michael Rossliff.[831.11][831.11][applause] Okay, this is yours right here. Mr. Zebulon Walser.[843.32][843.32][applause] Mr. Jesse Casino.[858.61][858.61][applause] Ms. Sarah Byram.[866.69][866.69][applause] Ms. Melita Smith.[873.25][873.25][applause] Ms. LaNisha Whitby.[881.86][881.86][applause] Ms. LeShawn Blake.[886.25][886.25][applause] Next, we have our career and technical education team. Mr. Daniel Manzer.[956.75][956.75][applause] Ms. Monica Manzer.[961.86][961.86][applause] Mr. Bruce Goodrich.[966.75][966.75][applause] Mr. Tony Johnson.[972.25][972.25][applause] The calling the mayor.[974.43][974.43][applause] Ms. Jatiana McMurray.[990.86][990.86][applause] Ms. Janay Robinson.[997.32][997.32][applause] And Ms. Angela Hayes.[1002.75][1002.75][applause] Unseen, unnoticed, and unrecognized. We're going to recognize them tonight.[1018.63][1018.63][applause] Our exceptional children's department.[1028.51][1028.51][applause] Mr. Kevin Sawyer.[1032.25][1032.25][applause] Ms. Sylvia Kirk.[1040.01][1040.01][applause] Ms. Angela Thornton.[1045.36][1045.36][applause] Ms. Shakwaja Hampton.[1054.43][1054.43][applause] Mr. Joseph Gravenese.[1063.63][1063.63][applause] Mr. Reggie Riddick.[1069.69][1069.69][applause] Ms. Sarah Adwell.[1075.86][1075.86][applause] Ms. Linda Gibbs.[1083.86][1083.86][applause] Ms. Margarita Morales.[1090.08][1090.08][applause] Now, for our coaches, now, I used to be at the middle school, and I've done the elementary school level as well, but nothing compares to high school. Nothing prepares you for the amount of hours that you spend after hours after school with our young people, being a role model, seeing to their well-being. Nothing compares, nothing prepares you for that. So, we want to recognize these coaches who have gone above and beyond to make sure our kids were recognized and taken care of. Ms. Fatima Faison.[1164.91][1164.91][applause] Shielding coach extraordinaire.[1170.86][1170.86][applause] Coach of the year.[1178.75][1178.75][applause] Yeah, coach of the year. Mr. Lorenzo King, wrestling coach extraordinaire.[1191.36][1191.36][applause] And coach of the year.[1194.08][1194.08][applause] And drone operator.[1200.25][1200.25][applause] Mr. Antonio Moore.[1207.51][1207.51][applause] Took our football team to the state championship.[1211.43][1211.43][applause] And coach of the year.[1215.08][1215.08][applause] Coach Ronald Nixon.[1228.86][1228.86][applause] Coach of the year.[1231.13][1231.13][applause] Coach Tony Johnson, better known as the mayor.[1252.82][1252.82][applause] Two-time coach of the year, as he expressed to me.[1268.13][1268.13][applause] Now, Coach Zebulon Walser was named as the North Carolina All-State Soccer Coach of
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to follow up with our Fine Arts Award, and it's so fitting that it's March and we have our Fine Arts Month, or Youth Arts Month. I'm going to start off with Delmonte Griffin.[1335.86][1335.86][applause] I hope I get this right. Sergeant, the Senior Master Sergeant, Weta Daniels.[1347.63][1347.63][applause] Ms. Claudia Zimmerman.[1365.25][1365.25][applause] Ms. Emily Table.[1372.63][1372.63][applause] Mr. Ronald Nixon.[1379.13][1379.13][applause] Ms. Elizabeth Sundberg.[1388.01][1388.01][applause] Ms. Candace Rainey.[1395.82][1395.82][applause] And Mr. Mark Arnold.[1402.01][1402.01][applause] Lastly, for Fine Arts, we have Lee Dix.[1409.75][1409.75][applause] Our next batch of awards is for a group of staff at Northeastern that we could not manage our daily schedules without. They do so much, and we are so grateful to have them. Our Secretary Award is for Ms. Denisea White.[1436.82][1436.82][applause] We have our Data Manager, Ms. Lakeisha Morris.[1453.43][1453.43][applause] Our Bookkeeper, Ms. Joanne Strother.[1471.82][1471.82][applause] Our School Counselor, Ms. Selena Lane.[1481.82][1481.82][applause] With your backpack on.[1496.13][1496.13][laughter] School Counselor, Kevin Chapman.[1502.25][1502.25][applause] And our Media Coordinator, Ms. Ann McCarthy.[1510.01][1510.01][applause] Our next awards are for three staff members that are new to Northeastern this year. Well, actually, I guess only two, but their roles this year have been so profound in our English, Math, and Science Department. Ms. Melita Smith, Science MCL.[1547.13][1547.13][applause] Ms. Jennifer Darnell, English MCL.[1556.51][1556.51][applause] And last but not least, Ms. Erin Gray, Math MCL.[1573.13][1573.13][applause] Our academics coaches have provided so much support to our teachers, and we are so thankful.[1596.01][1596.01][applause] Next, I have our Soaring Service Award for Ms. Allison Rollins.[1611.43][1611.43][applause] Ms. Latonya King.[1620.01][1620.01][applause] Ms. Leslie Elliott.[1626.63][1626.63][applause] Ms. Jessica Demetrio.[1633.32][1633.32][applause] And Ms. Danielle Miller.[1638.51][1638.51][applause] And lastly, I have Ms. Lori Lee.[1644.51][1644.51][applause]
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and start with the Eagle Pride Award. I have Alondis Williams.[1668.75][1668.75][applause] Mr. Joseph Lewis.[1674.25][1674.25][applause] Ms. Sharon Fagans, thank you.[1681.01][1681.01][applause] We have Ms. Nancy Wilson.[1686.01][1686.01][applause] We have Mr. Terrence Harris.[1690.82][1690.82][applause] And we have Mr. Danny Walker.[1695.51][1695.51][applause] And that was our Eagle Pride Award.[1698.51][1698.51][applause] Next, we have the School Wellbeing Award. We have our Student Behavior Support Award for Mr. Antonio Moore.[1724.63][1724.63][applause] We have our Support Staff Award for Stefan Saunders.[1733.91][1733.91][applause] Our Support Staff Award for Mr. Don Mercer.[1740.25][1740.25][applause] Our Support Staff Award for Ms. Shonta Porter.[1746.75][1746.75][applause] We also have the Instructional Support Award for Ms. Shirley Johnson.[1757.82][1757.82][applause] We have the Support Staff Award for Ms. Helga Brown.[1769.01][1769.01][applause] We have the Support Staff Award for Ms. Shanita Moore.[1776.25][1776.25][applause] We have the Academic Support Award for Ms. Christina Iacano.[1784.36][1784.36][applause] We have the Academic Support Award for Ms. Zana Goggins.[1791.13][1791.13][applause] We have the Academic Support Award for Ms. Anne Marie Shawn.[1797.63][1797.63][applause] And we also have an Academic Support Award for Mr. Ralph Cole. This award here is for our FACE Group, which stands for Family and Community Engagement Award. We have Ms. Monet Earl. We have Ms. Shaquana Edwards. We have Ms. Kathleen Peterson. We have Ms. Kenta Griffin. We have Ms. Rachel Broxson. We have Ms. Natasha Holly. We have Ms. Laquoya Cobb-Ur. We have Ms. Leah Nixon. We have Ms. Jamir Jordan. We have Ms. Thelma Jordan. We have Mr. Brian Peterson. We have Ms. Monet Earl. Okay. We have Ms. Tashiba Stallings. We have Ms. Whitney Liverman. We have Melina Norman. And we have Ms. Angela Evans.
So the FACE Group was, the names that he just named were the parents who, Ms. Ebony Stallings. That was her idea to have a FACE Group, family and community engagement. And those are our parents who stepped up and were willing to help the school. So we want to recognize them, but there's two individuals that, I don't know where their awards got to, but these two people work tirelessly. They work all day. They take our exceptional childrens, students, to job sites. They get on the bus with them. They stay with them. They check behind them. They go to the sites to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. They hold them accountable. Just like they would, you know, adults. And these kids, they perform for these two young ladies. So, Ms. Martha Hoppy. And Ms. Sharon Wilkerson. We're gonna get your awards to you, but I don't know where they disappeared to, but we want to thank you for your services. Thank you very much.
The way I try to teach is project-based. I want the students to engage with the work. I want them to be able to touch it, to feel it. And then we try to find different ways for them to show mastery. This is American History Honors Class. And as an honors class, we try to do some different kinds of things with students to really push them to think more about the content. And so my challenge is to try to come up with different ways to engage them with the work. And so what we're doing with this task, we're focusing on reconstruction in the Civil War, which is kind of a boring topic for students. But what we're doing is giving them an opportunity to actually serve as the teachers. So what we did was break the sections down. And then we gave the students a different section that they're required to become the teacher. So now they gotta focus on what DOK level, the depth of knowledge that they want students that they're gonna teach to have. They gotta create their lesson plan. All of this gives students another opportunity to engage with the work so that they think deeper. And what I find when we do these project-based assignments is that students are getting a lot more out of it.
So today, we're reviewing for our first check-in of the semester. What we're playing today is Clickers, so it's an interactive game that all give their responses. And at the end, they'll all get a score for that and they'll be able to see how they did. Our goal is that all of the kids are proficient. They'll be able to see which questions they came up short on and which questions they need some more support on and then which areas they were excelling in. It will also give us a breakdown of which topics they're still struggling on and which topics need some more reinforcement. And this creates a lot of buy-in with the students. They love to go through those questions and see if they made silly mistakes. They can kind of give us some feedback on what their thought process was when they were answering that question. And it helps them to grow so that the next time when they see it on the EOC, they will be prepared to decipher those questions.
Students are getting the opportunity to learn teamwork and collaboration through internships. This class actually selected to spend most of their modules with just internship content. They're gonna actually work with two businesses this semester. And then they're going to pick what other pathway they want to use for the rest of the semester. So some students may pick UX UI, some students may pick cybersecurity, some students may pick graphic design and different topics like that. They're actually learning how to edit videos on Canva so that when they start preparing their commercials, they're a little more familiar with the technology. We just finished our District C teamship where this class partnered with Mo's Cuts Barber Shop. And they're actually creating a commercial for that business to promote their business and get our students to interact with some of our, you know, local opportunities here.
This year, we have seen such growth in our math students across the board, especially in our upper levels. We have seen great scores coming out of our Math 3 classes. And we have seen a resurgence of kids taking our AP classes, the largest AP Calc class that we've had so far this year. And they're getting a lot of hands-on work with really difficult math. We really implemented some team teaching this year to allow kids to see different teachers and different teaching styles so that they can be as successful as possible in their classes.
I'll deliver the awards to you. Ms. Erin Gray, one of our MCLs. Ms. Jodan Williams. Mr. Melvin Mohica. And Mr. Makai Williams.
This is the time in our meeting where we would have public comment. However, at tonight's meeting, we did not have anyone sign up for public comment. So at this time, because I know a lot of you, we're gonna take a short break so that if you need to go home, you can. So we're gonna take a short break, about two minutes, and then we will start back in with our business. We are now back from that short break. And we are going to go right to our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted, one, to recognize the really incredible work that our school principals are doing right now.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I have been so excited about our recognitions and so excited about our Superintendent's Report. We just flew right through the Ethics Awareness Statement and we never did it. So we're gonna fix that right now. Thank you, Vice Chair Perez.
It is my duty to remind members of the Board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest in accordance with Chapter 138A of North Carolina General Statutes. As public servants, it is your duty to continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional affairs in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflicts or potential conflicts. Does any member know of any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the Board today?
Let the record reflect that no conflicts exist.
Thank you, Vice Chair Perez. And like I said, I do apologize. Seeing all those folks in here really got me happy and excited, so I forgot that. Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In lieu of the recognitions that speak for themselves tonight with the choir and then our schools and community partners, my only item for the Superintendent's Report this evening is just to remind everybody that we are just a mere 18 days away from spring break. And so I think that saying is keep calm and keep your mind on spring break, so we're really close to that. And then we're gonna continue moving. We have been launching our 60 Days of Purpose Plans across the district in our elementary, middle, and high schools, which is our focus, our hyper-focus, on our end-of-grade and end-of-course exams. So that work is in progress and spring break is a reminder that we are getting very close to those very important days at the end of the year. So having said that, that'll be the inclusion of the report, and I want to thank everybody that was recognized tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. And now we are going to turn things over to Vice Chair Perez and our student board members.
Thank you, Chair Cobb. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our student board members and let them introduce themselves and give their monthly reports.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Janaya from County County High School. It's a pleasure to see all of you once again. Our school has been busy since the last time we met, and I'm excited to share some of the accomplishments we have had over the course of this month. So I know they talk about DECA a lot, but finally, DeCA happened in the CDC and brought home 14 proficient students. Three top exam dallians brought home by Michael Callan, Sarah McCoy, and Addison Dunley. Three top role-playing dallians brought home by Ariana Hill, Emma Connor, and myself. And two fourth-place trophies in the hospitality season event, invented by Ariana Hill and myself. And in human resourcing event, and that was completed by Michael Callan. I am honored that Ariana Hill and Michael Callan have the opportunity to compete at the DECA International Competition in Orlando Florida in April. I would like to give a special thanks to the students who wore for reaching out to our committee and getting the old registered system to cover our cost making sure possible. This got recognized earlier, but I would like to share my excitement on the selection of our very own Sydney Lyer and Lulu Jones to the 2025 Governor's School Session this summer. As a governor's school alumni, I am very proud of these two students who are keeping the legacy going at Bass County County High School. And I know they'll represent our school and the district very well. Our semifinal candidates traveled to Arlington and they did not come back in handy. They received a perfect score at the NCPA, MPA. And I would also like to include that this is the third superior grade in government history, regigned back in 2014, 2023, and now 2025. Our school also hosted 60 Days of Grand Competition, which consisted of a multitude of games where there were four teams divided by grade level, where students were given worksheets of different force materials, and after the time ran out, they had to compete in a series of different games. It was very enriching and my classmates got the opportunity to step outside of the comfort zone and take part in activities. One of our current students, we all have the pleasure of hearing the National Anthem earlier. Jamira Magwood is singing the National Anthem Sunday, April 13th for the Bass Master Tournament in Elizabeth City and is joining the Televives on ESPN. Three students made all the conference of basketball, Kynata Parker, Brandon Smith, and Adam O'Boe. And Court Keller and Ariana Hill both played sports at wrestling state competition earlier this month as well. We are super proud of our athletes. Our staff and students went to support Northside Elementary School for the funeral of one of their staff members. And this cooperation has now turned into a weekly scheduled event. And we're going to be identifying some big brother bases or partnerships. This includes my monthly report. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see all of you. It's a pleasure. At the Early College, we have recently had a semi-formal dance that was well-attended. The National Arms Society tapped 18 students for membership. SGA visited all the elementary schools to speak with 4th and 5th grade students to share information about their early college experience. I'd like to give a shout-out to everyone who purchased a pork chop plate from our PTO. We raised a lot of money and again, thank you all. Students attended COA's Spring Fling and applaud COA providing this fun activity. The Early College Prom is Saturday, April 5th at the Arts of the Albemarle. I invite each and every one of you to come and check it out. Recently, between Wednesday and Sunday, we just got back yesterday. Me and three other early college students, Andrew Lee, Kayden James, and Renee Griffin, got to experience the N4CSGA Conference with the 58 other community colleges. And we also went to Raleigh to experience the Legislative Community College Event where we got to talk to a lot of legislators.
Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perez and Board Members, good evening. Ms. Reinhardt couldn't be with us this evening, but on behalf of school nutrition, we wanted to make the board and community aware that school nutrition, with the help of finance and technology, and as part of our strategic plan goal of operational excellence, will be migrating to a new software beginning April second. It's Heartland Mosaic. The customer-facing portal for student lunch accounts will be MySchoolBooks and this will only affect or impact those students that purchase à la carte, so those with a lunch account that use it to buy things, and staff members with lunch accounts as well. So, information should go out this week to families and staff and then Heartland Mosaic will send informations to parents and staff by March thirty-first. K-12 Payment Center, which is where you make your payments now, will no longer be available after March thirty-first. The balances are going to be transferred to MySchoolBooks on April first and they go live on April second, but there's no anticipated interruption to services for students in their accounts. Are there any questions that I might be able to answer? If there are no questions, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for pointing out the summer school plan there. Mr. Sammy Fudge is going to come forward on the summer school update there.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perez, Board Members, and Dr. Parker. Just here to give you an overview of our summer school retest for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Like last year, our kids will have an opportunity to retest in the subject areas of English and math. Due to our new science standards, our grades five in our secondary school will not retest in science this year. We have seven sites for summer school. Passaic County High School will be a standalone. Elizabeth City Middle School will be a standalone. River, I'm sorry, Northeastern will host River Road Middle School. Northside Elementary will host Sheep Harley due to the construction that's going on with the HVAC system there this summer. Central Elementary will host JC Sawyer due to the construction that's taking place there. Wheatville will be a standalone and PW Moore will be a standalone school by itself. Days for summer school is from June tenth through the twentieth. June ninth is a teacher's work day. June nineteenth is no school for students. Our staff will report from eight to one. Our kids will report from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. We have a selection process in place for selecting our staff. As of this morning, we have a hundred and forty-nine applicants. Principals and lead teachers will review the surveys that were submitted by the applicants and we have a criteria in place as far as our selection process. We will look at their experience, we'll look at the EVO scores and their performance on state assessments and their ability to work with their entire, and their ability to work their entire program. School staff will be selected on May tenth. Pay rate for certified teachers will be fifty dollars, for classified will be twenty-five dollars. And something important to note, just based on our thoughts as far as how our students will progress through summer school, our goal is to get them to get that information quickly and learn it and we want to test them. So, that might mean that we might be moving staff from school to school to support other students that need the additional support. Are there any questions in reference to summer school? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fudge. Okay, now, we're going to move on to new business and the first item on new business is lawn care services. Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perez, Board Members, and Dr. Parker, good evening. My agenda item this evening is to request authorization to make adjustments to our existing lawn care contract. Due to the fact that we don't have transportation to transport our equipment from the garage area over to the Northside Schools, we're asking that we make adjustments to the contract to allow the contracted services, St. John, to cut the grass for the Northside Schools. In conjunction with that, we'll make an adjustment of our current team of two to cut the grass for HL Tree, JC Sawyer, PW Moore, and Central. That way, we won't have to have the tractors and lawn equipment on the road trying to get from the garage area over to Northside to cut the schools on the north side of town. And that way, we will have inclusive of the ball fields for all of the schools that are utilized to have the same professional cut and the high schools, all of those fields will be cut by the same contractors and look exactly the same. That way, we don't have a difference in the way the fields look when the students are out to play all of their sports on the fields. So, we're asking for authorization to make those changes to the contract this evening.
And I had one quick thing here to emphasize what Alma said is that this revision to the contract allows us to use contracted services to invest in the playing fields at our traditional high schools, which is something that we have historically not used professional services for. We've done more of that in-house. But one of the portions of adjusting this, as Ms. Jordan mentioned, is our groundskeeping department's down to two employees. And so, to maintain athletic fields the way they need to be maintained, that requires people, but it also requires a lot of equipment that is very expensive and is also difficult to transport between schools. So, this is a shift in our strategy, but it emphasizes a goal of ours to, in the spring and summer, invest in our playing fields so that by the time we get to fall athletics, that we have really well-maintained and build up athletic playing fields. So, one other additional point I wanted to emphasize there.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any questions from the board? If not, can we get a motion on the floor to approve Item A, Amendment of Lawn Care Services?
Same move.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Perezza. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Can we get a positive vote with a show of hands, please? Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
And next up, we're going to have Ms. Sandy Kinsel, who is going to talk to us about a grant opportunity.
Sorry that we were added tonight to make things even longer, but to add to the flavor of the evening, we have some good information to be able to share with you. So, good evening, Chairman Cobb, Vice Chairman Perez, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. This evening, I've been asked to share some information about an exciting grant opportunity that ECPPS is pursuing from grants.gov. A couple of weeks ago, we were made aware of the grant, which is sponsored by the Department of Defense Education Activities, or DODA, and that it targets our military-connected families and students, which obviously, we have a great deal of military-connected families around here, not just at our Coast Guard base, but also Elizabeth City is home to many people who work in Norfolk and they're on the naval bases at Langley Air Force. So, we have a lot of military connection here and so, we wanted to be able to take advantage of this particular grant opportunity. So, the grant opportunity, as is presented there, has been administered by the Department of Defense, as I mentioned earlier. There's two components to it, so there's actually an opportunity to apply for two different grants, but it's two separate applications. The first one is the Academic Support Program, or the MCASP Program. This is the program that we have elected to apply for this year, but to be honest, we were, we could, we could be eligible and are eligible to apply for the second grant as well, the World Language Advancement and Readiness Program. But we've elected to focus on one this year and then pursue possibly the second world language component in the future. Next slide. There are lots of reasons why we want to pursue this particular grant. First of all, the number of military-connected families and students is growing at ECPPS. We also have secondary schools. They have the highest number of military-connected families. In order to be eligible for this grant to begin with, we have to have a district percentage of ten percent or more of military-connected students. This number is growing over the last several years and when we broke it down by current numbers for this year, then we found that all of our secondary schools are looking at over twelve percent, twelve to eighteen percent in some cases, and our early college is actually near twenty. So, the grant in itself, then, the district would apply on behalf of the activities that would be sponsored at those particular schools. So, as our military connectedness grows over the next several years, we can expand the opportunities that this grant affords to other schools as well. So, again, our grant then would also allow us to support the military students and have a positive impact on the students in our schools. And of course, the strategies that we would use to support the military students are aligned with our strategic plan objectives that also include the dual-language program, the global international studies, and the International Baccalaureate Program that we're implementing this time. Next slide, please. So, what would the grant provide? Based on the number of students that are in the secondary schools, we would be eligible at the top tier of this particular grant, which is five hundred thousand dollars, over the course of up to five years. We would look at implementing for three years, the five hundred, if we awarded the grant, we would implement over three years, which would give us an opportunity then, in three years, to reapply and possibly receive more funding to be able to continue the work we're doing in that particular grant or pursue the other grant option. Right now, we have about four hundred and seventy-two students on our roster right now that are military-connected and we are looking to be able to put some services in place, particularly having a military liaison role that could serve us, helping families when they move into the area. But we're also looking at the academic supports that some of our military students need. Obviously, military, if you have any background on them, they're very transient, they get orders, they move, and it can sometimes cause some gaps in their learning. So, they have special needs. As I've delved into a lot of the data to support this grant, though, we find that they're actually a very resilient bunch and they are performing very well, in fact, very high in all of our state assessments. So, we're digging deeper and find that there is an opportunity for us to be able to provide some support as it becomes your career and college readiness as it's measured by our ACT scores. So, that's part of what we're going to be focusing on. Next slide, please. Okay. So, the grant framework, again, is going to be focused on the rigor and relevance that will equip students for academic and professional success. And again, these, these will, the grant will provide us with some opportunities for sustainable activities that, once the grant's gone, that we could maintain. But it also is going to give us an opportunity to advance achievement for our students as they move closer to graduation. We're going to be focusing a lot on our International Baccalaureate Program because of the framework that's already established. We have plenty of things going on that's helping to move the, move our students forward. So, we don't want to add one more thing. So, this grant is looking to dovetail with what we already have in place and this seems to match up mostly with our IB presentation, especially since we're focusing on the secondary schools. So, again, focusing again on rigorous interdisciplinary units and global integration in our teaching and learning. We're going to build capacity in our educators so that they not only have the skills to be able to plan, but execute lessons at a much higher level and be able to provide the academic counseling to align with students' post-secondary plans with their course selections. Next slide, please. And this slide just kind of outlines some of our alignment to our strategic plan. Obviously, the biggest one is reimagining education and again, it ties tightly with what we're already doing with the IB program. We're also aligned with our talent recruitment and retention. We want to develop our educators so that they can teach at this high level and be able to produce the results that we're expecting. And not mentioned here, but also aligns with our partnerships because we want to partner with our communities and as you saw tonight, we have great partnerships with our Coast Guard, so we want to maintain them. Next slide, please. So, our key applications, it's coming up pretty quick. So, our application is going to be due on April eighteenth and to be able to help with this very extensive, it's a very powerful and a very extensive, not your car, I hope, it's a very extensive grant application. So, we are pursuing assistance from a nonprofit. You can go to the next slide, please. we find that they're actually a very resilient bunch, and they are performing very well. In fact, very high in all of our state assessments. So, we're digging deeper and find that there is an opportunity for us to be able to provide some support as it becomes near career and college readiness as it's measured by our ACT scores. So, that's part of what we're going to be focusing on. Next slide, please. So, the grant framework, again, is going to be focused on the rigor and relevance that will equip students for academic and professional success. And again, these, these will, the grant will provide us with some opportunities for sustainable activities that, once the grant's gone, that we could maintain. But it also is going to give us an opportunity to advance achievement for our students as they move closer to graduation. We're going to be focusing a lot on our international baccalaureate program because of the framework that's already established. We have plenty of things going on that's helping to move the, move our students forward. So, we don't want to add one more thing. So, this grant is looking to dovetail with what we already have in place. And this seems to match up mostly with our IB presentation, especially since we're focusing on the secondary schools. So, again, focusing again on rigorous interdisciplinary units and global integration in our teaching and learning. We're going to build capacity in our educators so that they not only have the skills to be able to plan, but execute lessons at a much higher level and be able to provide the academic counseling to align with students' post-secondary plans with their course selections. Next slide, please. And this slide just kind of outlines some of our alignment to our strategic plan. Obviously, the biggest one is reimagining education. And again, it ties tightly with what we're already doing with the IB program. We're also aligned with our talent recruitment and retention. We want to develop our educators so that they can teach at this high level and be able to produce the results that we're expecting. And not mentioned here, but also aligns with our partnerships because we want to partner with our communities. And as you saw tonight, we have great partnerships with our Coast Guard, so we want to maintain them. Next slide, please. So, our key, key applications, it's coming up pretty quick. So, our application is going to be due on April eighteenth. And to be able to help with this very extensive, it's a very powerful and a very extensive, not your car, I hope. It's a very extensive grant application. So, we are pursuing assistance from a nonprofit. You can go to the next slide, please. So, we are grateful to have the partnership of RTI International. This is a nonprofit group that really focuses on research development and has a team ready to help us be able to not only research the best practices, but also to assist with the grant-writing process. They will help us also in terms of our evaluation and project implementation when we're awarded this grant. So, we're expecting great things to happen with this. So, at this time, if there's any questions that I can answer, I hope that I can come before you again in the future and say that we've, we've won.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsel. Any members of the board have any questions?
Thank you.
So, if not, we need a motion to approve Item B to allow for the submission of this grant application.
Same moved.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Second.
And we have Ms. Perezza as a second. Any further discussion? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. At this time, I need a motion to return to closed session.
I move to return to closed session.
Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Williams.
I'll second it.
Ms. Bowlen has seconded. Any discussion of returning to closed session this evening? If not, please show your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. And that is the end of open session for this evening. Thank you all so much.